Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, March 8, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, before we get started, open forum. Is there anybody here for open forum?
Yeah.
No, you are an appointment chief. All right, seeing no one for open forum, I will close open forum. And Mr. Clerk, could you just take us through the agenda, please?
Certainly. Two appointments tonight. We have both chiefs, Paul O'Brien and Tim Heron will both give us department updates and only four action items.
Great, thank you very much. All right, well, Chief O'Brien, come on up. Deputy Chief Jenkins, welcome.
Well, start off Happy Woman's Day.
Thank you. International Woman's Day, right?
International.
It's a wonderful day.
Do you want to elaborate?
Nope.
Okay, a quick update. The past year, it's been quite interesting. We faced COVID, protests, the election, and some serious calls that the town hasn't seen in a while. We've had to improvise the way we operate under the, all the pandemic rules. Vaccinations have taken place for the department. And I can say confidently, all our offices are still being very proactive out there, even through the whole pandemic. We've promoted two patrolmen to sergeant. They're working out very well. Now we have a supervisor on each shift, so that's a big, big positive thing for the department. We're still moving forward with our in-house trainings in services all online. And we have, is it Officer? The in-house training program.
The Akatus.
PoliceOne.com. Officer Morale is very good. We've just hired seven new permanent intimate offices. That's not a cost to the town or to my budget. They have to pretty much supply everything for themselves other than uniforms. And that, that brings us to the, our present staffing level. We're at 21 sworn offices right now with one in the academy. That includes me and Mike. We'd like to replace the officer who resigned. We lost one who went to a different department. And we'd like to add on two new offices. I did give everybody the outline of the budget, so it's roughly $102,211.80 to do what I'd like to do for the department for next fiscal year. And with the reorganization, reorganization of our department, we've been able to make these changes quite efficient for a cost perspective. So we're just looking for your input. We did meet with the Finance Committee last week. They said they would go by what you guys say about changing our requests where we've added the new firearms to up at $102,000 to give us the money so we can go out and hire. Because if we hire tomorrow, we can put one on the road who already has training, but the other, the other two, all three will need the full-time academy. So we're still looking at about a year before they're really ready to go. So if you have any questions, I'll, I'll take them.
I'll refer to my colleagues first.
Chief, could you, I know we don't have him in front of us, could you just broadly go over the difference between East Bridgewater's number of offices on board and the rest of the towns and the number of calls and so on that have been made?
Sure. So what we did is, I mean, over the last few months, we've, we've, we've taken a look at the national averages. The national average is about 28 for a population our size. And looking at the bordering towns, just to give you an example of some similar communities, Rockland with a population of 18,000 has 33 sworn offices. Abington with a population of 16,000 has 31 sworn offices. Whitman with a population of 14,900 has 28 sworn offices. West Bridgewater, whose population is 7262, 7262, 7,0262, has 23 sworn offices, more than us. Bridgewater, population 27,365, has 42 sworn offices. Hanson, population 10,874, 25 offices. Norwell, population 11,115, 25 offices. Pembroke, population 18,000, 30 offices. Hanover, population 14,570, 29 sworn offices. So just once again, looking at the national averages, they're about 28. And you just heard our bordering communities within this, you know, state of Massachusetts, and we're at 21 sworn at this point in time. So just to show you how much our manpower is down in comparison to similar communities with similar populations.
So you're looking basically to bring it up to 24?
Right now, yes.
Right.
That would be replacing an officer, just lateral transfer to environmental and two more hires.
Back in 96, when we started, we were at 25. That's what the department was at.
Okay, again, I have gone over these figures before. I think the numbers speak for themselves. And I don't think there's anyone that has any question whatsoever about how great that, that force is. And I, yeah, I definitely support the addition of the, the two, two more officers and filling the vacancy.
Yeah, I basically said it since I got here. We're just an extension to support whatever the departments need, whatever they are requesting. And in this case, you know, I fully support both of you guys and the department in growing the numbers in order to be adequate to help serve and protect. It's just, you know, pretty, pretty easy to explain, I think. I appreciate, though, coming in and talking to us.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I think that I told you a story last week about a time when I was at home and I was watching then Police Chief John Silva give a presentation to the Board of Selectmen about some hiring that he wanted to do. And the board at the time, and I don't even remember who was on the board, pushed, was pushing back and saying, no, you know, he couldn't do it, he didn't, no, you know. And I remember looking at my husband and saying, I'll be right back. And I, and I drove down and I basically said to that current sitting board, this is your department head. This is the person you have trusted to run this department. Get out of the way and let him do your, his job. He's telling you what he needs. Give him what he needs. So I certainly, now that I am in the position to make that decision, I'm not going to, you know, tell you that you don't know what your department needs because you do.
Thank you.
And, you know, you've been to FinCom, you've done the right, you know, been through the maneuvers, so I think. Are we voting on this tonight? Is that the?
Support the recommendation?
I will.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to support the recommendation of replacement of one officer and the hire of two new officers.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for coming in, thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Stretching those resources.
Tim, it's all yours.
Next.
Come on up, chief.
Since you're not getting moved, I'd like to request.
Nope, we're all out now. That's it.
I did a grant before, but I'll take them now. Well, Happy Woman's Day. Sorry I can't follow that.
Thank you.
I didn't even know about it till just 10 minutes ago.
Neither, until somebody reminded me.
So anyways, I'm gonna, before I give a department update, I just want to give a brief update on COVID-19 and what we've accomplished over the past few days. So last Thursday, the Board of Health received 100 doses for the Housing Authority. So we held a clinic last Thursday and were able to vaccinate 80 people that live either on, within Prospect Street or Wrightell Road. That left us with an extra 20 doses. I'm happy to say today, we visited 20 homebound residents and vaccinated them with their first dose today.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
We don't expect future first doses, but the Board of Health will keep trying. Fire Department, I was the lead on it in the beginning, but Fire Department's have been pushed aside, as we know from talks before, and it's, it's a Board of Health issue, which is where it belongs anyways. But I know Sue Malloy is working tirelessly and has been for over a year now. It's hard to believe it's been this long, but it is what it is. So, you know, moving forward, I don't, I don't want people calling the Board of Health, finding out when it could be their turn. The doses that we received, they were, they were allotted from the state specifically for housing. And they really are geared towards moving into the statewide vaccination site, so to say. I know the, I believe the teachers have a meeting with the governor on Wednesday, and they're trying to get it so the Fire Department can come in and vaccinate them. I hope that they are successful in that. We'll pretty, pretty much be able to vaccinate every teacher on a Friday, so they'll be back and ready to go to school on Monday if that passes. I believe there's about 300 in town. So we did 80 in about three hours Thursday. We easily double the manpower and do the entire school jurisdiction, if the governor will allow it.
Question, on the 100 doses that you passed out between Thursday and today, do we have the guarantee of that second doses coming in?
Yeah, they did, well, nothing's guaranteed. But anytime I've needed a second dose, we've received a second dose. And I'm pretty confident that if we didn't get them, I could reach out to Representative Sullivan and they'd be here within a couple of days.
Okay.
She's been very helpful with that, as well as the other senators and representatives. It's kind of weird, you know, everyone's all over the place, the state, both Democrat and Republican, as far as where they think they should be, but the governor, the governor and DPH of this stay in the course and they're, they're holding the line, so good luck to the teachers on Wednesday. But, you know, I wish them well. As far as the Fire Department's concerned, 100% of my full-time staff has gotten their first dose, and there's only three that need the second dose. We had three hauled out, and apparently they saw that everyone else didn't, you know, have really bad effect, so it'll be good in a couple of weeks that everyone will be 100%, vaccinated. With the CDC's new guidelines today that came out about, you know, easing restrictions indoors amongst those that are vaccinated, we've been in masks since. We had a breakout at the Fire Department back in November, so we've been in masks 24/7. So it'll be good to be able to breathe not without having, having a mask in front of our face. That'll likely change, it'll be, you know, kind of let up a little bit tomorrow, except for the three that still need to be, the second dose. Unfortunately for them, they'll have to remain in masks, but the light's at the end of the tunnel. So I'm, anybody out there who's contemplating getting a vaccine, get a vaccine. If you're going to be vaccinated, get the vaccine. It's good to see that the CDC has put some guidance out there now to actually make it more attractive to get vaccinated. I've been behind, kind of waiting for this, and it's good to see they've moved in that direction. So, moving forward, a brief update on the Fire Department. We're in the process of hiring one firefighter paramedic now to replace a resignation that occurred recently. That'll, that'll keep me at my, at full staffing, with the exception of two that I have on, on the job injury. One's due back sometime between June and August. Another one pretty much is going out Wednesday and won't be back likely till July. That unfortunately is going to make me really tight again this year with the budget, similar to what I've experienced, not last year, but the year before, and the year before that, and the year before that. There's just, there's no way to, it's not one thing, Carol, it's another, your department that you know it. I mean, I can't budget for OJI's and I can't budget for extended sick leaves, it's an impossibility. But I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to work the numbers around and maybe have to move some stuff around to, out of expenses for education, whatever, to cover some shifts. Worst case scenario, it'd be, you know, a small reserve fund transfer if yourselves and the FinCom would approve that, but that won't be until, you know, probably mid to late May. Other than that, we've been, we've been really busy during the beginning of COVID. Things pretty much shut down and we weren't quite as busy. Our runs, total runs last year actually dropped from an all-time high to, of like 29, 2,900 ish, 2,700 to 2,363, I believe is the number. So we took a pretty good hit. But it's, it's since turned around and we're very busy again. We've had a lot of house fires this year, the past, you know, six to eight months. I don't know if it's because people are home more often and things happen, but, you know, we've been very busy with house fires lately and then the EMS calls are starting to pick up, which, which is good financially for the town because that obviously, ambulance billing kind of offsets the Fire Department's budget, which frees up mine and the general That's that, that's where we stand.
Nice.
I just want to give a shout out to the firefighter paramedics and, you know, worked for me. They, they through this entire COVID-19 crisis, they, they came to work every day, no complaining, even we had to wear masks. You know, nobody wants to do it. It is what it is. But I got to give them a shout out because they really stepped up and, and, you know, did something that they, they weren't prepared for. I wasn't prepared for this. You know, we kind of learned as, as we went with how to deal with a pandemic. And hopefully I'll never have to deal with another one.
Amen.
As well as anybody else in this room. But I just want to give them a shout out. They really stepped up and did a great job over the past year and continue, continue to do so today.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, you guys have worked really hard and, you know, we appreciate, we appreciate it. Can you maybe just explain the people, how did you identify the people that got those extra doses?
Oh, they were all, so early on, we had developed a, a list for over 75s.
Mm-hmm.
And then we increased it to 65 and over and with two comorbidities. So pretty much Sue Malloy started from the highest age and worked its way down. Are you talking about for the ones we did homebound today?
That's what I, yeah.
So the homebound, we, we had two lists. We had one from the council aging that was supplied to the Board of Health and one that we got from, I can't, I can't remember the name of, Oak Colony.
Oak Colony Elder Services, yep.
They, they only had two, but we had more in town that the COA was aware of. And we were able to vaccinate those, as well as anyone who lived with them.
Great.
That was part of the, the guidance that was, that was allowed by the state. So that's pretty much how that came out.
Excellent.
And if we had any dose, doses extra above that, it would have been utilizing the, the over 75 list. We were, we were able to do two on Thursday. There was 78 people that needed, we had two, two doses left over, and we utilized that over 75 list to get some people in there to get vaccinated, so.
Great.
Anytime, anytime we do, anytime we have extra, that's, that's, that would be our model. A lot of people, we called it, luckily they've already gotten their.
Yep.
First vaccine, which was good to see.
Yep. Yeah, the vaccine lottery is a real thing.
Yeah.
And vaccine envy is a real thing, too. We see it a lot. So thank you for explaining.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question, chief. The accident that we had up on Central and Moss the other day.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain the paramedic's role in that?
Well, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, David, because I, I was on my way home from work and I might have to start going a different way because it's the second thing I've kind of unsighted. The first one being a house fire. But I, I was probably right around the police station when that call went out and I guess the gentleman in the vehicle must have had a, you know, went into cardiac arrest and didn't obviously stop at the stop sign, hit another car. The police got on scene, they started evaluating, and I pulled up right afterwards. Then it was determined that the driver of that vehicle was unconscious and unresponsive. He was taken out of the vehicle. We immediately started CPR. I ran to get my AED. We set him up, the AED, shocked him once, right there. Continued CPR and the ambulance finally arrived on scene shortly thereafter. He was pretty much put on a, I don't know if anyone witnessed it, but we have a machine that actually does CPR for us. It actually does much better CPR than a human's normally can do. He was, he was, it's called a Lucas device. We were, he was put on a Lucas device, put on a backboard, transferred to a stretcher and put in the ambulance where he was given medications and they ended up getting pulses back on scene in the ambulance. And he was breathing on his own. And he was transferred to Brockton Hospital.
Okay.
And I'm having a brain fade right now who the sergeant was. Sergeant Mike.
McLaughlin?
McLaughlin, thank you. So Sergeant McLaughlin, Officers Curtin and Andre and myself, we were the, we were the pretty much first four on scene. And then firefighter Gallant was in the ambulance with my brand new, my newest firefighter, who's still in his precept time for his medic for the Fire Department, firefighter Young, you haven't met yet, he hasn't been sworn in yet either. Lieutenant Wolf was involved, so was Lieutenant Olson, and they transported to Brockton Hospital where he was, he ended up being transferred, I found out today, into Boston.
But again, it just shows what a, it's a tremendous group that we have here on both sides.
Yeah.
You know, firefighters working together, obviously they saved a man's life.
I agree. I, I wanted to speak about it, but I, I don't like putting the spotlight on myself and I was directly involved from the beginning. And I was trying to find a way that I could convey that to whoever without being a part of it, because I don't like to be a part of it. I like to just let my people take the accolades for it. It is what it is.
You're welcome. Thank you for taking the lead.
But I hope he, I hope he survives. You know, he's, I think, 65 or 67 years old. That's too young.
Just a kid.
Yeah.
That's, thank you though.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I just wanted to make one more note that, you know, it was, was very helpful, along with a very big advantage for you to step into that Board of Health role. You know, as liaison, I was concerned, you know, with Bill Hubert's passing, what, what the direction over the course, because, you know, again, we're still in a pandemic, they've got other things that they're dealing with upstairs as well, and myself, and I'm sure the rest of the board was concerned, just in that short period of time, that four, four month, three and a half month window, what, where we'd be prior to an, an election. So again, you know, thanks. I know it's been a, can I say a pain in the ass?
You just did.
Okay.
Just a small pain in the ass.
Right. Just, just another role, you know. And, and again, I appreciate you helping them out, and I know that the board does as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Obviously, you know as well as I do, that, that did not go how I anticipated it when I stepped in.
Yep.
I thought for sure we would be vaccinating people in this town.
Right.
And I would be able to, having done a couple of successful clinics, I would be able to share that knowledge with them for my brief time there before I departed in April and kind of had the rug, you know, ripped out from under us and, you know. Maybe someday it'll, it'll come around and we'll be able to vaccinate people again, but I, I don't think it's going to be that way. But, but thank you, I appreciate it. And, you know, I said nine, nine, well, nine or 10 years ago, and I took this job that, you know, I didn't want to be involved in everything, but I would be involved in certain things that if the board needed me to be and, or I thought myself I should be, and I really thought, you know, I, we talked and.
Yep.
I thought I should, you know, fill in in that role, at least to help them out, being so directly involved with it and kind of giving Sue a break as well, because she's worked tirelessly, I mean, weekends, holidays, everything. And luckily with the numbers coming down a little bit, it's, her job's become a little bit easier. I don't want to say a lot, but it's kind of a little bit easier and she can take a breath and let's just keep moving in that direction, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much for coming in and explaining what's going on and filling us in and.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. We appreciate the work you do.
If I get any other good news, I'll be sure to pass it on, and thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. Action items.
Yep.
Mr. Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2021, 5:00 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Approve the mutual aid agreement between towns of East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater. They agreed that for the period of July 1st, 2020, June 30th, 2023, towns' building commissioner, inspection, inspector of buildings, local inspector, building inspector, electrical inspector, and gas and plumbing inspector will at no expense to other towns serve as the other towns' respective inspector with such services coordinated by the inspectors.
That was a mouthful.
It is, a lot of inspectors there.
Any discussion on this?
Thank you. This is a renewal of an agreement that had been in place for years, and so this is just a continuation of it. Last time, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but West Bridgewater signed it first, this time it's your turn to sign it first.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, any discussion on that?
No, I think the Board of Health does the same thing, though, with, with their, with the health inspector as well.
Correct.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Approve and sign the lease with Lipinski Farm.
Second.
Any discussion?
As you know, this was approved by town meeting to lease out agricultural land, otherwise known as Leland Farm, and they're winning, so it was put out to bid and the winning bidder was Lipinski Farms. And so it's put before you this evening for execution.
Just in time for spring planting.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 The fourth item is to approve the intermissional agreement. At this time, I'd like to see if we can just pass over that. We do not have the, the agreement yet with Brockton for the SOAR. We are meeting Wednesday this week to go over some more details that they'll be looking for, but I hope by, definitely by the next Selectmen's meeting, we'll be signing that and moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update.
That's it.
All right. Town Administrator Report, Mr. Noble.
Thank you. Got a couple of things for you. Finance Committee continues to work diligently on the budget and they're coming down to the end of the process, but we're still, we're still waiting for some numbers to come in. The regional vocational school budget is yet to come to us. And then there's still some non-union wages that are still over the Personnel Committee that are still outstanding. And today, we were informed that, although I'm still working on the numbers, that our health insurance is going up more than we had anticipated. It's not a surprise, but it is, you know, an unwelcome present. I'd like to tell you that the engineering proposals are in and we're going through the process of evaluation at the moment, and hopefully we can pick up the pace on that. There are 11 proposals, all of which are actually pretty good. So I'm quite, quite impressed with that. Also with me this evening is Melissa Morrissey, our Treasurer Collector, and I'd like to send a thank you in her direction for all the work that she's putting into our hopefully rerating of the town's bond standing. We are currently at AA3 with Moody's, and I'd really like to be a AA plus, so, or excuse me, a AA1, and that would be equivalent to a AA plus with Standard and Poor's. We have a conference call set up with them shortly. But we have knocked off an awful lot of things on the to-do list. That puts us in a very good position. And I'd like to tell you that I could not have done that without Melissa, so I want to thank her.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
So we met today at 3 o'clock to select the interviewees for the town planner position, and that went very well. We have five candidates that the committee will interview, and hopefully we can get that done in the next week and be able to be in front of you for our final selection shortly. The highway, excuse me, the DPW Director has taken charge of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. Thank goodness, thank you, John. And he's scheduled some meetings next, next week that will hopefully start the process of finishing that proposal. Am I saying that right, sir? Okay, great.
Working through the process to develop what we will identify for the overall submittal as our significant threats and where we anticipate vulnerabilities within our infrastructure and throughout the community. That team will meet over a series of three days, working on those, looking at a number of different aspects of our vulnerabilities and how they impact our community. From that, we'll develop an action plan that we will submit. There'll be an opportunity, two to three weeks following that, for a public listening session, so we'll be able to bring those ideas forward to the public, get their feedback as well, before the final submission is made to the state. This is the planning portion, once we're approved for the planning portion, is when we can actually look at moving forward with projects. And projects range, it's grant funding that will make us eligible for projects anywhere from $100,000 to $1 million annually, grant funding to address what has been identified as, again, universally vulnerable. It is, it doesn't have to per se be an infrastructure project. It can be a social issue. It can be things like that. So, you know, particularly that climate change and environmental factors are influencing within the community, you know, how, it'll be an interesting process to work through.
Okay.
I've also received a note today from Mrs. Nancy Piesco of Rolling Hills Drive is concerned about the town having not accepted her street and the condition of that street as a result. This was built in the 80s and has never been accepted. And of course, it's one of 25 miles of street in the town that hasn't been accepted. She's asking the board to accept it at town meeting. Unfortunately, we're not ready to do that. And there is a procedure for the adoption of town roads, which is posted on the website, but it does bring to the board's attention that we do have a problem here.
What I would suggest at this time is that we get together with, you know, DPW and Patrick up in the planning building and Mr. Noble and one of us to put together, I don't know if we're going to have to get a committee together. And once we get down to practicalities on how we go through and get this endorsed and get it corrected, because I'm sure each street has different problems. Some of them, we may have bond money, we may not have bond money, and then we'll have to, at some point in time, prioritize, you know, who's first. One of the amazing things I have found on this is Bridge Street has never been accepted. How can it not? But, so that's my suggestion is let's, you know, let's get, get together as a group for all those that are concerned in it, all those that are a part of it and go from there. And let's, once we get started, let's put some kind of a deadline on and I will, we at least have an answer on how we're going to start.
I think it's very important that we establish a timeline on this so that, you know, we can help. We are, we are going to get this done and, and let's move forward with that. And like you said, figure out a way to prioritize which ones get done first.
Well, we have two things that are.
And a, and a budget for all of it as well, because it's, it's not free.
We have two things that are coming to our advantage on this, is the selection of the town engineer will help us and the addition of a town planner will help us. And so, these are projects that we hopefully will get some professional assistance with.
And there may be grant money, I'll tell you, we don't know about yet. We'll find out.
And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rebecca, announcements?
I just have a couple of community announcements. Hazardous Waste Day is coming up, April 27th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Gordon Mitchell School. The list of materials that will be accepted and not accepted are on the DPW website, which is.
Mr. Haynes, would you like to go on and just give us a little background on this? Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Will you let me off the hook on the verb?
That's right.
Now, Hazardous Waste Day is a DPD mandated program handled every community. And Massachusetts has to have a household hazardous waste takeback day. It's similar to the drug takeback situation. We contract a commercial chemical firm, in this case, it's Clean Havas. They work with us to take, you know, household residential waste. And again, I stress household. Oftentimes, we have commercial entities that try to bring in industrial waste or significant quantities of excess materials, fertilizers, gasolines, things like that. This is, again, household. We, we try to stress that to people. We do try to help you, you know, our residents, if you are a resident of the community. But it's a, it's a program that has a cost to the community as well. So, as we manage these, but it's important, it's been ongoing now for more than 20 years. It certainly is an important thing that communities do in the sense that these eliminate the things that get put in the drains and dumped in people's backyards. This is a, this is an opportunity and a way for them to get, to get rid of these materials. I want to stress to people, you do not have to line up at 6:30 in the morning, which tends to happen. We'll have 70 cars lined up on Central Street. There's only been one, there's only been one time that that happened to us and we had over 400 vehicles in a four-hour span. For some reason, the word got out, it was the last hazardous waste day the town would ever have, which is, is not, was not true, is not true. And we will continue to hold hazardous waste days annually in the spring. The date does move back and forth, but typically we try to make it sometimes towards the end of April, the beginning of May. And again, you can bring in, I would actually recommend to residents they defer, or I will defer to the website for the, you know, the hazardous materials. Call the office if all that fails and we can fill you in.
Once again, though, whatever they bring, they're not getting back, correct?
That's important. Right. That's important for people to understand. Containers. For, with the COVID, the COVID world, there's some, there's some new requirements. It used to be a little more open. People could get out and access their vehicles and hand things over. And then you'd get, you know, if you take a, a rubber-made tote, you have to understand the materials and the rubber-made tote will be collected. And so there's no.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes. So, there's no opportunity to retain those things.
Is that because of COVID or is that?
That was, those are, yes. They, they don't want people getting out of their vehicles and taking things out of the totes, which is all things we used to be able to do. Now, essentially, you don't get out of your vehicle. You either pop the hatch or open the tailgate to your truck. And they actually will do that. The contractors work there and, you know, when you see them, they're, they're in the full time H2, but now they're in the masks, except for more than just the hazardous chemicals now. So, there are some, there are some additional regulations.
Maybe we can get vaccines and vaccination of everybody in their cars at the same time.
Wouldn't that be something, huh?
Yeah, right? Wouldn't that be like logical? Anyway, back to you, Rebecca, in the newsroom.
The list of materials that are accepted and not accepted can be found on the website, which is www.ebdpw.com. And they had, there is another event the following week, April 24th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, which is the Community Shredding and Prescription Drug Takeback Event. It will be held at the, Center at Satcham Rock, 355 Plymouth Street. It's open to East Bridgewater residents only. And all the information for this event can be found on the town's website. And upcoming, we have a town meeting, May 10th, 7:00 PM, junior, senior high school.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Board discussions. David?
None for me.
Peter?
Just two quick ones. We met with the Rec Department last Thursday. Myself and John Haynes were both there. They are going to extend the assistant to the Rec Department position till the 18th.
Did they not get?
No, they got two. So, they're just seeing if they got any others. Yeah, it's kind of a tough situation where the hours are whatnot and it's only for a short period of time. But anyway, so they're going to extend it to the 18th of March and then have a review of whatever those, whoever those candidates are on the 25th at the next meeting. And the last part is I had a conversation with Jared. Yeah. John knows him. County Commissioner.
Jared Valenzola.
Valenzola. Jared Valenzola was a newer county commissioner and he's coming to meet me, John and a resident regarding some.
Environmental opportunities.
Okay. I could have said that. No, no. Environmental opportunities.
I never like to say what it is until I know whether we're going to get it or not.
They've got some grant money regarding some dragging of some, some of the potential freshwater ponds and whatnot. So.
They have an extensive dredging program that they offer. And for several years, we've been looking at opportunities for some of contaminated but silted water bodies to be able to dredge those areas for stormwater management as well as environmental benefits and.
That's great.
Yeah, we had a local resident that had reached out about Robyn's Pond. John has some concerns, some questions about Forge, too. So, we figured we'd bring her in as well. See what happens.
Excellent. Very good.
That's it.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right. We need to have a motion to move into executive session?
Make a motion to move into executive session?
Do we need to read these? We do, right. Yeah. Can you read the?
Yes.
The two, the two items?
Under executive session pursuant to the MGL Chapter 38, squiggle the eye in 21, section 21, "To discuss the strategy and respect the litigation as the chair has determined that an open meeting may be, have a detrimental effect to the town's litigation position in a matter involving Janelle Rotundo in the pursuant MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, 'The Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparation for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel to Conduct Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel,' Town Administrator Brian Noble."
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Peter Spigot, Junior Clerk.
Say aye. Aye.
Ed?
Hey, Sheedy. Aye.
Carol Julius, aye.
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 Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Be safe out there.